Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicely led, thank you. Now, the next item is action in closed session. There was no action taken in closed session this evening. I'd now like to ask for an approval of the agenda. I want to propose one amendment. Through an oversight, the spotlight for this evening was not added to the agenda, but it will occur immediately after we approve the agenda. So it'll be item E, and then item G will be approval of the consent calendar. With that amendment, are there other amendments?
I'll move the agenda as presented with that one amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 So that's unanimous. Great, so that brings us to our spotlight, second one of this series of spotlights.
Yes, thank you, President Knight, trustees, student board member, and staff, and everyone who is in the audience. Thank you so much for coming tonight. This is our second school spotlight. And tonight, I'm very, very proud to introduce the principal of Cornell Elementary School, Ms. Heather Duncan. And first of all, thank you very much, Ms. Duncan, for hosting us tonight at our board meeting. And I would like to turn over the spotlight to you, your staff, and your students.
Okay, I probably, really, I'm not sure if we need this big microphone, but I'll pull it up just a little bit.
It's for the recording.
Okay, good, then I'll be happy to use it. So thank you so much for having us. It's a pleasure to have it at Cornell, too. I'm not going to really talk too much, except to tell you that it's been fun putting this together. I did about this much of the work to get the spotlight ready for tonight. And my part in this was really just to plant a seed. So I'll tell you about the seed that I planted, and then how the plant grew. I, earlier in the year, was talking with lovely Ms. Gritman about an idea of starting a little tech team at school, comprised of possibly upper grade students, and how I would like to have upper grade students start a tradition at Cornell of letting teachers sign up for events in their classrooms, of special things happening on campus, very organically. And that these kiddos could go around campus, take pictures of things happening on campus, and that when we had built up enough of a slideshow, maybe on a regular schedule, maybe not, that we would edit these slideshows and publish them for internal use only, for teachers to share them in their classrooms. And so, Ms. Gritman, as you may or may not know, is very eager to do things with technology at school. And from that moment forward, about every two or three days, would come in and say, "When are we going to start those slideshows?" And I'd say, "As soon as I get it." Well, she's pretty eager about stuff with technology, so she'd come in and ask me. And every once in a while, I'd say, "Well, as soon as I get a time, a chance, we'll do that. I promise. Just keep, don't forget, and keep coming and asking me." So when we got ready to work on the Cornell Spotlight, and I talked with staff a little bit about what would we like to spotlight, how would we like to showcase our work at Cornell, Jen again said to me, "Oh, great idea. I think we should put out a clipboard and see if we could spotlight a week in the life of Cornell Coyote. And we could definitely have kids go around campus and take photos of the things that are happening." And I said to her, being, tried to be very respectful, "It's conference time. It's so busy. Are you sure that we can get teachers to do this right now, and are sure that you have time?" She just whipped this up so quick. And Zach and Will have been going around campus. We managed to get over a hundred photos of things happening at school in a week's time of grades K through five. That is all I'm going to say about this. These kids have done all the work. And it was just from a seed of an idea, so they're going to come up tonight, tell you the rest of the story, and share the slideshow with you. And tomorrow, we're going to share it out with all the teachers and start this tradition of having slideshows for internal use only, so that we don't have to worry about permissions. And then, we're going to share it with teachers and ask them to share it in their classrooms, because kids have been asking, "Can we share it? Can we share it?" And I said, "No, no, we have to share it with the board first. They need to be the first people to see it." So, boys, are you ready to come up and talk? Okay, you do all the talking about this great thing, okay? We're really proud of the work that you did.
Hello, my name is Will Bannan.
And I'm Zach Cola. We are fifth grade students at Cornell in Ms. Gritman's class.
We put together a slideshow to show you some of the great lessons and activities at Cornell.
Over the course of one week, we took pictures all around our school.
Tonight, we present a week in the life of a Cornell Coyote.
We hope you enjoy this presentation of our great school.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Wow, this is one of the best days of my life. It's fantastic.
They're really good. There were a lot of action shots in there, which is what I appreciated. You know, sometimes you get a lot of folks mugging for the camera, but you really caught them in action. You really caught students doing what they do, and I really appreciated seeing that.
And I got a sense of how much fun it is to learn at Cornell School. How good the teachers are, and how you really get pretty well nurtured and taught.
Jen, did you have a part of this?
Uh, no, I just, I put up a clipboard and sent a few reminder emails to sign up. And then I let them go whenever they needed to, so I didn't call up anything back, but they did it all.
It's great teaching. Thank you.
Could I ask some technical questions of you gentlemen? So...
Go back up.
So, did, what kind of camera or device did you use to take the photos?
We used our teacher's camera.
Yeah.
You did? That, what kind of camera was it?
I don't, it was just a regular, like, smaller camera. It wasn't one of those big cameras.
So you did, um, did you have to do a lot of adjusting to it, or it was pretty straightforward?
We did, like, some zooming in and stuff like that, but it was pretty straightforward.
It wasn't lots of editing the photos.
Well, I thought that the photos, the action shots, and some of the perspective, like, how close you were and all that, were very nicely done. So I, that's why I was asking so many questions about what kind of device and so forth that you used.
Really talented, and I was figuring a nice SLR, big one.
Exactly.
My only advice to them before they started going was not to take photos towards the windows, because I've taken so many pictures here at Cornell that get kind of washed out because of such big gray windows.
Well, you learn a lot by trying and by experimenting, and I was pretty impressed with what you were able to do with a fairly simple camera.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And Zach and Will, I wanted to let you know, I'm very impressed with the fact that the photos you took were so varied. There was science, and there was art, and PE, library, music. I mean, you really captured the spirit and just the variety of what's offered to students from kindergarten all the way up through the fifth grade. And so I really want to commend you that, I think you really took, put a lot of thought into this to make sure that, you know, we as an audience really got to see, you know, what that one week in the life of a student is. So, thank you. You should be very proud of what you've done.
We had a lot of, we tried to get into every grade, and we took pictures in every grade in numerous different subjects.
Yeah, we tried to incorporate everything, so you could see every single thing, just like you said.
And you got the best smiles out of everyone. Really, that's hard to do.
And that's really nice for the students, too, for your audience, to know that, you know, you tried to go to different grades. It's because everyone will, of course, be trying to see if they see somebody they know. So that's wonderful that you thought to try to really get as large a group as you could.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great way to start a meeting. Thank you. All right, well, that brings us to the almost as exciting consent calendar, which we need to approve unless there are questions, comments, or proposed pulling of items.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimously approved. And so, we now have persons to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda. If anybody would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight, please come on up to the podium.
Mass exit.
All right, then. Seeing no one, I will move on to student board member report.
Thank you. So, the next large activity at Albany High School is next Wednesday. It's Career Day. So, that is an event I'm sure most of you have heard about before. It's been going on for quite a while at the high school, but professionals from a variety of fields come and speak to students during the advisory periods. And each student gets to go to three different events. So, and the variety is great. It's been growing in recent years. So when I was a freshman, it was quite, the selection was smaller, and this year it's much larger. Last year, I went to a doctor, a biologist, and a rabbi. So it's a great variety.
There's a joke there somewhere.
And so...
Let my life run.
We'll be doing that next Wednesday. And then, the blood drive is the next activity after that. So, we're hosting a Red Cross blood drive. We have two per year. But Leadership is hosting our fall one on December 17th. And a representative from the Red Cross came and spoke to the leadership advisory about leadership opportunities within the Red Cross. So that was exciting. And then, we have started to plan winter ball. Because there was no homecoming dance this year, we're putting a lot of effort into our winter ball. So it will either be on January 31st or sometime in February. If it's in, if it's on January 31st, it can't be in our gym. It has to be at another location. But the drawback of that is that there's a limit on the amount of students we can have at our event. But if we have it in February, then we can have it in the gym and have more students attend.
Is there a reason that we can't have it in the gym?
The, there's a basketball tournament for the middle school happening on January 31st that day. And also, the women's volleyball team won the first round of NCS last night against Drake. And so they'll be continuing on to the second round of NCS this Saturday against Campolindo. It's an away game. And Theater Ensemble is putting on their production, so that's why Michael isn't here today. He's, he's in the play. And so the play is called "You Can't Take It With You," and the last three shows are tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday. And it's a great source of revenue for Theater Ensemble. Many teachers offer extra credit for students to attend, so that we have more attendance at these events, but generally, they're well attended. And then, finally, we're planning a teacher talent show at the high school. It's a popular event. We've done it a few times before, where teachers sign up to showcase various talents, and we raise money for leadership that way. So currently, leadership students are recruiting teachers to attend the talent show and to show off their talents.
When is that? I want to be there for that one.
I believe it'll be sometime in December. We haven't named the date yet, so I'll get back to you on that.
Can you just, like, shoot me an email?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to attend that. Okay, thank you.
And the Theater Ensemble is performing on Sunday, is that right?
Saturday is the last showing.
Saturday is the last, and that's at eight o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Is there a matinee?
No, they have one show per evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Isabel. So, we now have a staff report on standardized testing, our standardized testing update.
And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Marsha Brown, who will be presenting this item.
Good evening, good evening, board members, Superintendent Williams, and esteemed colleagues in public. It's my pleasure to provide this update on the standardized testing. Actually, it's a co-presentation. Director Peter Parenti is also going to be presenting some of the slides this evening. Tonight's presentation is to bring you up to date on the standardized testing, what's left of standardized testing in the old system, and to bring you up to date. As you know, we're transitioning to California Common Core standards, and as a result, we are also transitioning our statewide testing system. So tonight, we're going to review the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, or Sback, that was administered in the spring. Peter will address that. I'm going to bring you the recent results from our spring 2014 California Standards Science Test, which is given in three grades, and I'll give you a five-year comparison of that. And then, I'm going to present you with our, the last five years of the EAP, the Early Assessment Program, in both English and mathematics. So with that, turn it over to Peter.
Thank you. Good e- uh, let's make sure, yes. Really close. Good evening, board members. Good evening, Superintendent, and members of the public. I'm Director Parenti, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and I take full responsibility for the administration of the Smarter Balanced Assessment System. And last year, I should say last spring of 2014, we administered our first, what the system calls a field test. And by field test, every student in grades three through eight and in grade 11 were expected to participate in an online assessment in mathematics and English. We were expected to administer that sometime between March and June. We were provided with participation rates, and no results were made available as far as student achievement. This administration was across 22 states, actually, in our country, so that's a first. We're part of the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, which is a majority on the west side of our country. And so what I have for you tonight is really just a snapshot of participation rates. What I will have, if all systems go well for the future, we'll start with participation rates, and then we'll be looking at achievement rates. So, coming in the future will be an understanding, and a lot to learn that we, we have a lot to learn around how achievement rates will be reported. There's still a lot for them to report to us about how that works. But in the meantime, the slide here shows third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and 11th grade participation rates. This is important to consider, because if the federal government continues to hold our districts accountable for Title I, II, and III funds, and participation rate is the first criteria on any standardized testing system. Our participation rates are generally expected to be somewhere between 93% and 95%, depending on the test and the grade level. And we achieved very high participation rates in all grades except for grade 11. So this is a representation of a lot of effort on our staff's part. This required us to have technology in place, and plans for technology at least a year and a half prior to this administration. Our IT department, former leadership, really had a vision for making sure that we were prepared to really focus on tests, testing skills, and not having inadequate access. So we had enough devices on every campus for every grade to be tested across that grade at the same time. That meant that I had a week, and all third graders across the district could be on devices at the same time. All fourth graders could be available at the same time in the following week, and all fifth graders could be available in the following week after that. That same time, we were also able to put in a sixth grade across the district at the same time, and then seventh, and then eighth. So it gives us an understanding that we've got about a one-to-three ratio of devices in grades three through eight. And almost 100% of those devices are Chromebooks. It's a, another effort on our part for our teachers, because there's a very different system of administering exams with the Smarter Balance than there are with the STAR. If you can picture in the STAR exams, we're carrying boxes of booklets and papers and pencils and bubble sheets, and we're inventorying them in rooms, and we're having defined storage, and we're having checkout systems, and it's extremely complicated. And then you have to reorganize the books for the math proctors of the test next week, and secondary systems. It's, it's been a nightmare. We've gotten very good at. In the Smarter Balanced Administration, we set up a teacher with an online portal, and they call their kids to task using their online software, which is a very different dynamic. Physically, there are some things that are a lot easier, but logistically, there was a lot to learn. And so, the final slide, though, or the final bar, I'm going to anticipate, before you ask, why is 11th grade participation rate below 60%? And we've come up with a number of what we think to be very reasonable answers. At the, at the same time that we were expected to administer the field test, 11th grade was not released from its responsibility to take several other exams that have a lot of high stakes. They were asked to continue, we were offering the Early Assessment Program, which Marsha Brown will be reporting on in just a minute. They were still asked to take, in 10th grade, the science exams. There are still, so 11th grade doesn't have science exams. In 11th grade, they still had AP finals during the same window of time. And they were working through college applications, or looking forward to college applications. What else did students tell me? When I visited every classroom, they looked quite tired. In this bar graph also, I don't think reflects actually every child who tried the test. Several students, more than 59%, tried the test, but didn't get all the way through to the end of the test and click submit. We had a report on how many were actually able to click submit. And we found several, maybe 20, I should say, who actually completed all the questions, because the system will tell us how many questions they got through, but they didn't hit submit at the end. So they didn't register as participated. And so we had to call them back down to the office, have them log in, have them hit submit, and then that bar went up a little bit. But during this very crazy time, it wasn't possible for everybody to do that. In this coming year, the EAP will be, actually, we will be using the Smarter Balance for the EAP exam. And so at this point, there may be stronger motivation for the students to complete the exam. That concludes my report on Smarter Balance. I'll certainly have a lot more to report in the coming months.
Just as, as one who knows high schools pretty well, and others of us as well, you know, if you give a no, no stakes exam to 11th graders, you're going to have, that's a high participation.
It was actually, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I was actually very interested in hearing what our student board member had to say, in case you remember, had you, did you try taking the 11th grade exam?
Yes, I...
Be a good perspective for our board members.
I completed the exam. I do remember, though, that many students were suspiciously sick on the day of the exam. But there, also, I remember there were many technological difficulties. And that may have provided a roadblock for many students to submit their tests.
Oh, so it seemed like students were having trouble using the Chromebooks and logging on and so forth?
There were some students who couldn't log on, couldn't access the test.
There should be things we can learn from that.
Yes, actually, we learned a lot about how, and I don't mean to tout our own horns, but I do remember that we had done everything possible and more to, to meet our demands in such a short amount of time. A lot of the failures in the software were happening at the other end of it. And so we would register teachers in, and then we would re-register new teachers in. Old teachers would drop off the system. We'd have to go scramble to find a way to get that teacher logged in within the minute, because the students were waiting. So there were a lot of really interesting glitches at the software level.
But that would have affected all grades equally, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. So, for example, we registered 20, what, 20 teachers to be test proctors, at the, about 20 at the high school. Only the teachers that were going to be administering to 11th graders. And we would come back the next day and find that 19 were now in the system, and the 20th was not in the system. And we'd go in and we re-register. And then the email from Smarter Balanced wouldn't get through our system for 24 hours. So we'd have to find another proctor. It was just very complicated at that level. And so students weren't able to log in until their teacher invited them to that test, using their portal in that moment.
Helen?
So that seems like all part of the learning process. And we're learning a lot in this first year, so things should just get better. Couple observations. I was impressed to see that we're kind of winding down on the state standards tests and that we were improving on what's called the achievement gap. We were going from a 25% achievement gap down to a 20% achievement gap. And I look forward to that process continuing in the new evaluations, although there's going to be a transition period where I think students are really, it's really hard to predict what the performance will be that first year, or even the second year, when they're going through a whole new assessment process. And it's, it appears, I think I read that the Early Assessment Program is phasing into what's called the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Is that...
I'll get to that a little bit later.
Oh, I thought we were, yeah, I was wondering.
It's just Peter's part. We're going to move into science and EAP in a minute, so.
Yeah, so the answer, though, is yes. Board Member Maris, that EAP will be the Smarter Balance this year.
It's just a segue, then.
Yeah.
So the next slide reflects our, our performance in science. The, this is the only remaining California Standards Test that districts are required to administer, and we administer it in three grade levels, fifth, eighth, and 10th. And those are the same grades that have been taking the CST science test for many years. So this slide gives you an overall view of it for the past, our performance for the past five years. And I want you to think of, although it's not great color on that particular screen, it is actually brighter in the, in the live version. Think of a stoplight. And so green is good, and red is stop, rethink what you're doing. So what you want to see over time is growth in the green areas, which is the advanced and the proficient. That's the top of those bars. And then you want to hear, see a reduction in the red and the orange, which is at the bottom. Those are your far below basic and your below basic students. And that is exactly what we're seeing in our, our results. Our advanced and our proficient percentage has increased from 74% in 2010 to 81% this past year, 2014. That's an increase of 7%, totally going the right way. And in addition, our below basic and far below basic percentage fell from 12% in 2010 to 8% in 2014. Again, that's what you want to see. So the overall trend in science is, is very positive. And I, I want to totally acknowledge our dedicated science teachers, who are to be commended for their excellent work with students. That doesn't address the transition to next-generation science standards, but that's a whole nother presentation. So, I'll, unless, the next slide talks about the Early Assessment Program. This was developed by the California State University System. And it lets students in 11th grade know whether they're, they are on the right track to be college-ready for college English, for the English part and for college math. It's an early signal, and it gives students an opportunity to improve their performance or their skills during their senior year or during the summer before they start college. Albany High School has made participation in EAP pretty mandatory for a number of years, with the exception of this past year, which I'll explain in a minute. But as you can see on this slide, our 11th grade student performance has also been steadily improving. In 2010 and 11, a student received a score of either ready or not ready, yes or no. And in 2012, the CSU added a third score for English called conditional. So you can see a significant drop of students deemed not ready for college English, from a high of 48% in 2011 to a low of 32% this past year. It's exactly what you want to see, a reduction in that number. So I want to commend our high school English department for their work, and also, they review these results annually, and it helps guide their instruction for the following year.
Excuse me, Marsha?
Sure.
Just to clarify, did you say that this conditional category was a new category as of 2012?
Correct. That's why it's not reported in the first two years.
Okay, so, I mean, not to pour cold water on it, but I mean, I'm not sure there's really any change in the numbers over time, because that 14% that you see in 2015 might have been there in 2011 as well. They just didn't measure it. They were just lumping them in with the not readies.
Correct. But I was trying to make it as...
I appreciate that, but I mean, 53% ready, 53% ready from 2020 to 2014 is what I see.
The definition that I think you gave for the conditional is just if you complete the next course in the sequence, then you will be ready.
Correct. I wasn't able to find a real strong definition on the CSU website about what conditional meant in English. I found it in math, but I couldn't find... But I couldn't find the definition of what it means, but generally speaking, it just means you're on the right track. You'll be ready, but you need to take another class in your senior year so that you're, you will be, acquire all the skills necessary.
And in this process, do, are we, are we assessing whether or not a student needs remedial English in, if they're admitted to college?
Yes, that's what this does.
That's what conditional is?
No, for example, the people that are in the bottom.
Not ready.
Not ready. They may have to go to remediation, but that's in 11th grade, so it's just an early, I mean, things may change in the course of a year. So they would have the opportunity in their freshman year, for example, if they attend a CSU to take a placement exam. And, and they might possibly.
Test out or qualify.
So those students are in the not ready.
Yeah, if.
Well, this is, these are students who, these are the results from 11th graders.
Okay.
Okay, they're not in college.
Got it.
And it's an early signal to them, their families, and there's teachers about, they're on the right path, they're ready. Or heads up, you're not ready, you need to take some extra classes, you need to get some extra help. You know, you're not quite ready.
But the EAP actually is, is, the CSU has looked at that exam, and if you fall into that not ready, I believe you're still required to take the placement.
That's correct.
That's right.
That's correct. If you take the EAP and you're, you're deemed ready, you, you're exempt from those placement tests.
So is there any way of rationally comparing this with CST results? Previous, any we used to know?
Well.
These are English and math.
Well, I know, but we took, we had CST.
They, they, it is the.
Earlier years.
It is the CST, in English and in math. But there's also an additional writing. There's an essay component for the English that's not part of the CST. So it's, it's sort of, it's in the neighborhood, but I don't think you could compare them very carefully. And you're also test, you're testing different things. So as, as the statisticians and scientists in the room know, the number of students who participate in assessment does have an effect on the overall results. So I wanted to show you that our English participation numbers in the EAP have been really consistent and, for the past five years. So these are the results in math. Performance in math has been relatively stable over the past four years, and you'll also see that they've had that conditional score for those past four years in mathematics. It indicates that a student is conditionally ready for college-level math, but definitely needs to take a fourth-year math or sometimes a science course in their senior year to ensure that they maintain their readiness. This past year in two thousand fourteen, the AHS math department did not require students to take the EAP in math. And this decision was made due to the transition to the Common Core math standards, which are very different from what the CST math assessment looks at. So that's why we have a very different result for two thousand fourteen. And then the participant, participation rate, as you can see, we only had twenty-seven students.
That's right.
Take it last year, so those results are not comparable to prior years. So that concludes really the report that we have for you regarding standardized testing. We are definitely in a transition time. And we are looking forward to seeing our results this year in the smarter balanced. And allegedly, from what we know, we get those results much sooner than we get in the CSTs because it's computer-based.
So April?
Gosh.
We are, the, the field test that we took in the spring of two thousand fourteen did not expect us to take both of the performance tasks in English and math. It expected us to take, and I'm saying this because this is part of the answer to your question about scheduling. It only expected us to administer the short-answer questions in both English and math. And then at any one of the grade levels, we administered one performance task or the other, not both. As we schedule for the upcoming spring of two thousand fifteen, we anticipate that we'll be expected to administer both. And that's the plan that has been submitted from smarter balanced. We're just waiting to hear more details. But in adding both performance tasks, it adds a significant amount of time to testing. And so I don't think, my projection is that I don't think it's going to be a good idea to schedule all of a grade level in one week. I think by the end of the week, you'll have very tired teachers and students, and the results by the end of the week will be disparaging. So scheduling is very tricky. We have a pretty wide window. In third through eighth grade, the window opens in March, which is quite early compared to old standardized testing systems, where they would have us try to push towards the very end of the year. Eighty-five percent of the school year had to be completed before you'd start your CSTs. With smarter balanced, they're allowing us to start much earlier. In 11th grade, though, it still has to be closer to the end of the school year. So scheduling is, we've got some tentative dates set up in the weeks during the month of May.
For the testing?
For the smarter balance testing.
And the results come back a little more quickly because.
Again, you know, I'm gonna be reporting on what they say and, and hope for, but this is all an, I don't want to use experiment, but it's a thoughtful trial and error process, a very careful trial and error process. They had anticipated, and they have projected, that our results would come back much faster because it takes so much less coordination and shipping. I mean, to get results from STAR, you have to box them back up and count them and put tape around them and put them into UPS and get them up to Sacramento and take them out, scan. It's an inordinate amount of time, and we don't get results for four months, five months sometimes. There is a piece, though, smarter balanced, that while the short-answer questions can be scored relatively quick, because it's computer-based software, the long-answer questions, I'm still wanting to kind of keep all our cards on the table and wait and see. Because the long-answer questions do have to be read by people. They have to be scored on rubrics. All the essays for mathematics and English have to still be read by, I believe, I think the system is gonna ask us, you know, not ask us, but the system at Sacramento's level or the state level is gonna require a lot of people reading a lot of these answers and scoring them on rubrics. That's gonna take time.
Thanks for the explanation. That's very good.
I don't know that I want to set us up to say, I'll have a report for you on smarter balance, let's say by the third week of June. It still might be September, October.
Good answer. Thanks.
Thanks.
Other comments, questions?
I just, you know, I've been recent, I'm not surprised by, by the, the great results that we're seeing, you know, it's what we would expect. Just recently, I've been researching other local districts, because I have a friend who lives in Hong Kong and is coming to the US with a sixth grader next to her. You know, I'm looking at the, where she probably will be living with her son, and it's, you know, it's like, hmm, this doesn't look good. And then the other school, hmm, you know, and then I come and see these, so. Once again, it reaffirms how I feel about what the work we do.
Any comments or questions from the audience? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you both. So we're moving to our review and discussion item, just one this evening, the budget update with election results.
This is a happy presentation. I'm gonna turn this over to Alan Gard.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, President Knight, members of the board. So tonight, I'm gonna be providing a, a happy presentation, a, a budget update to the board on the election results of Measure LL Parcel Tax that occurred on November fourth, two thousand fourteen. So it passed. Excellent news. So what is showing on the display is the ballot language for Measure LL. It's the extension and renewal of the expiring parcel tax, which was Measure I. And it passed with a whopping eighty-three point three two percent. If we take a look at historically how Albany has fared with elections, you know, I just want to thank the Albany community for all their hard work and support, continuing to support Albany schools, as you can see from this bar chart. So the first set of bars, the green bars are the actual passage rates for each election. The bars in front of them are the required, the required rates for passage. The orange are the parcel taxes, and blue would be the bond measures. So parcel tax is for program and bond measures are for buildings and school facilities.
So I still remember the parcel tax that passed by sixty point five percent, and it didn't pass until the last precinct report. So these parcel taxes can be very tight. We're very fortunate. Public supported us at eighty-three percent.
Yes, definitely. And we also want to thank the Parcel Tax Committee for all of their hard work and support, and all the volunteers that helped out, you know, leaflet and make phone banking and just all the hours that they put in. It really shows from, from the support.
May I add too, please? We, I don't want to forget the fact that our teachers' union and classified unions actually endorsed and supported this. So I do want to thank our associations, because that is a, it's once a tremendous endorsement, but it shows that as a whole community, that everyone believes in Albany schools. And I actually believe that after the provisional ballots, I think it's eighty-four percent. I think it's a little bit higher.
We're starting to get as good as Barbara Lee.
Yes.
She won by eighty-four percent.
So in summary, because it's a very short, just brief presentation, we just wanted to remind the board that Measure LL helps reduce the structural ongoing budget deficit, which is caused by the state squeezing us with the new funding method, which is reduced funding while increasing our costs. And so, you know, I, again, just want to thank the community and, and all their hard work for supporting this measure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
I'd like to thank Alan for giving information to the public, which they really, in a way that they understood. And all the meetings he attended and, you know, the clear presentations that I saw.
Thank you.
I think the information flow had a lot to do with it this time. I thought it was very clear, the, the materials that I saw that were dropped off, you know, on, that, well, I helped hand out as well, I think probably a lot of us did. Were very, I think, clearly presented. The emails, the messages were clear, and I just think probably a lot of that has to do with what you were able to communicate to people, but I also think it has a lot to do with the committees, that, the commit, the citizens committee that put it all together.
And I went to several meetings where, oh, we went to this presentation that Alan Dart gave, and you know, funders who were out in the street helping to support this.
All right, so questions or comments from the public on that item? All right then, we'll move on. Thank you, Alan, and we'll go to our review and action items this evening. The first up is a second reading of the next generation science standards.
Thank you. As you recall, at the last board meeting, we had a presentation on the first reading of these next generation science standards. And so now we are bringing this back for its second reading and approval, and I'll turn this over to Peter Parenti.
There it is. Good evening again. I bring to you the second reading tonight, the brief synopsis of what was presented last time we met. Many thanks to our science department chairperson from Albany High School. Provided some background information on a phasing in, transition and implementation plan over the next few years. We presented details about the frameworks, the actual standards themselves, and a transition, some ideas about what we would need in support for our teachers to be able to implement these next generation science standards. This is part of our strategic plan and goal number one in assessing and providing for student learning. And so tonight, I just, I bring to you the second reading and a request for the board to adopt the next generation science standards.
Questions or comments?
I just remember how enthusiastic you were, Jonathan, about the new standards and, and Alan, but I, I, I take the recommendation of scientists and I, I look forward to seeing them become implemented.
Alan?
So I'm still just as excited as I was two weeks ago. I reread Appendix E, it's just fantastic to see how the science standards progress through the grades and how broad they are and how interrelated they are. So that if you're studying physics, you understand how that may impact chemistry, which it does. I have one question, and it's in your list of questions to consider. What sense do you have of the size and sources of funding? Because this is gonna cost some money.
This is a very, very expensive initiative, and my sense is right now that the state has not yet come up with a plan to support us from the state or federal level, and that we are going to have to prioritize very carefully as a district so that we can support our students in this regard. We do not have funding allocated like we did with the Common Core implementation planning for these past two years. There's no promise or even thinking on the horizon right now.
And that funding has been barely adequate, I think, as well. It's been helpful, but there are some shortcomings.
There are a lot of shortcomings in that one as well. So our lessons are learned that finances are extremely tight and that more and more, the priorities for our schools are on the local community to, to grapple with, including instructional materials, which used to be categorized and separated out from the state as directly funded when you would adopt and purchase curriculum materials. That's not the case anymore. But we also have to consider that science requires really adequate facilities.
That's right.
It requires a very specialized credentialed personnel that are somewhat hard to staff. I think, though, I'm not, I'm not without hope. We live in a really robust, wonderful San Francisco Bay area filled with institutions who support us and, and depend on us to provide them with good thinking scientists. And so I really, my hope is rooted in our university systems and our private sectors.
So you've been to workshops on this, I assume, and this question must have been asked by other school districts. Hopefully, they're asking the same question. The state will feel the pressure? The feds will feel the pressure?
No, not yet. I'm sorry to report. In fact, I don't want to imply that I've been to several workshops on next generation science. I think what, I completely support these. But I am cautionary, because we have now been adopting very large new content standards in our core subject areas, one year after the next. And so we just adopted math. We are just getting started. We're just getting started with mathematics. We're thinking about English Language Arts for this, you know, supporting that in this coming year. We have not adopted any new materials in Common Core English. And, and now we have science, and now, and then we'll have history. And so my only caution there is that I think there's a lot in a short amount of time, and that does raise my concerns. So there's not enough time in the day for CNI directors, principals, and teachers to be able to really absorb all of this so quickly. So when I think about a transition plan, I think about just awareness right now and hope. And not trying to discourage by saying, oh, there's no money, so let's not even learn these standards yet. I just, I really want to just temper our, our timeline on that and give some time and patience to our teachers who are right now focused on mathematics, and, and then we'll move into English and see what goes with science.
The cost of science instruction, that's, that's nothing new, actually.
It's one-time costs upfront, and it is, it is an ongoing, ongoing cost forever in the future. And that's the same case for math and English and history as well. There's always your one-time costs for the new materials, but you have to put support in behind those new materials, and you have to put support in for consumables and for ongoing learning. And so one thing I think we have learned well in this district is that we didn't adopt standards and then use Common Core funding for just more materials. We actually put a lot of emphasis behind supporting professional development. And we, and we're gonna need more of that kind of support for our staff.
And if I could just add, so the state's message on actually funding next generation science standards and things like mandated requirements that they have, schools do, things like Common Core, their message is that they are funding them with the same pot of money, which is LCFF. So I, I don't expect that they would then come up with another set of funding to specifically fund those, those programs.
It should be interesting. I'm really excited about it as a science teacher.
Sure.
But I think since Alan is more excited, he should make the motion.
Oh, okay. I move to approve agenda item. Oh, okay. I move to approve Agenda Item. A, Line A, the next generation science standard.
I'll second that motion. All in favor of approving the next generation science standards, say aye.
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 So that's unanimously approved. And we can move to the sec, the next item, which is the obsolete equipment for disposal. I believe this is the vans.
This is the vans. I'll turn this over to Alan Gard.
Thank you. So tonight, we're recommending for approval the Declaration of Obsolete Equipment for Disposal. The equipment that we are recommending would be the three athletic vans. We have been using over the past few years to transport our athletic department for their needs. However, it's come to our attention that those vans currently are not in compliant with current vehicle code. And so the plan would be to follow education code as far as obsolete equipment, go through a public surplus process to sell the vans, and then use those proceeds to purchase replacement vans.
So there was, I sent you some questions about the timeline and what you've, and I really appreciate your answer. So maybe you share that with the public.
So we plan on, with the approval, we would go out to public surplus to, to sell the vans. It would probably, we plan on having the vans sold in December of next month. And then the following month is when we would plan to purchase replacement vans.
And having been part of the first round of buying these old vans many, many years ago, I guess, you know, the thinking is, you know, when we rent or pay for transportation, it's incredibly expensive.
Yes.
And so owning vans and having our own people drive and having volunteers who are cleared is, really saves us a lot. And it's more pleasant anyway for our students.
Some of it is just practicality. I mean, you have some of them, you have smaller teams, for example, the golf team, you know, who have to practice every day but not on site. So, you know, they will, they will need those. I've been asked by a number of various groups when those vans are coming. So I'm glad that there's a very clear timeline.
Have we, have we ever had an update, I think we did, on the security of those vans? And we built cages at one point at the high school that they really didn't work. I saw them parked at the district office the other day.
Right. They're currently housed at the district office. I'm not aware of that, but I can research it and get back to you.
It was a real concern and we had had some incidents because they're valuable properties. Now, Paul's not here, so I don't know if anybody sent the typo in to anyone.
We need Paul for that.
Background information, next to the last line, vehicles that are in, and it should be compliance, not compliant.
Oh, yes.
Got it, okay. And I never sent it to anyone because I didn't know Paul was in town. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. You have a motion on the van disposal? Oh, we have a public comment on the van disposal.
I'll move that we approve disposal of obsolete equipment.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Next up, Career Pathway Trust Grant.
And this is going to be presented by Alan Gard and Dr. Brown.
Thank you. So tonight, we're moving for the approval of the Career Pathways Trust Grant that was awarded for Albany Unified School District. We have the contract in the backup documents. And Dr. Brown and I are available for any questions.
Questions?
I'll ask the question that I wrote to you, just so that it can be in the public meeting. I have said before that the board is always interested in data, particularly about student achievement, so that we can better understand what programs best support our students. At the same time, we are very aware of how stretched administration and the district office are in terms of having the capacity to do data collection. So I asked because I didn't see a specific budget item or I didn't see anything regarding data and data collection. So perhaps you'd like to give the answer that you gave me.
Be happy to. We did allocate some of the grant funds for some, an additional data technician for some of that data analysis and data entry. Again, it's temporary for the grant. But the hope is that it, once we have those systems set up, we can then automate it, so to speak. Some of the challenges are in the definitions of what is a career pathway, for example. And I'm working in a small subgroup right now to work on that definition so that the data we collect is data that is comparable across districts. And this grant is also with our community college partners. And so the data that we collect and the data that they collect has to match. But we are in all kinds of different systems. So it's a, it's a big effort on the part of all of the entities involved to come to common definitions and then figuring out a system. Because there are probably five or six different student information systems that the K-12 districts use, not. The community college is all on one system. K-12 districts are not. So thank you for acknowledging that and recognizing it. It's a huge task of this grant to come up with common definitions, common coding, and then the collecting of that data. I think it's going to take us at least this first year to tease out those definitions and figure out the data collection.
I know it is a long-term process, but we have always wanted to know more about post-secondary options of our students. We want to know where they enroll, how long they're there, whether they finish. And this is a small step towards that. So I'm realistic, but I, but I, it's nice to see that there are some resources allocated.
And the long-term goal, one of the long-term goals of this grant and the other grant, the 1070 grant that is more like mega-regional, is to not only be able to follow students from high school to post-secondary, but also to follow them into the world of work and know what their first job is and what those wages are, so that they can trace that back through, you know, what prepared them in high school, what prepared them in either community college, CSU, to go out into the world of work and what that looks like.
That sounds fascinating.
Yeah, it's a great long-term, long-term goal. And so I'm excited to be a small part of that work.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Alan?
So this grant to the corridor, all of the groups, is about fourteen, fifteen million dollars?
Yes.
For eventually eighteen thousand students in the various categories?
That's the corridor's best projection, five years from now, when the grant was, actually more than that, when the grant was written.
Right.
And remembering that this includes districts like Oakland and West Contra Costa.
That's right.
So my question or concern is, do you have a sense of how this program will build over the four years we have in our district?
So the intent, in working with the high school staff, our hope is to do one pathway a year. And this would be the planning year for the digital media pathway. And followed by, we had hoped, the build and lead. But it looks like due to facilities, we're going to postpone that and then move into perhaps the medical, the biomedical pathway.
That's very wise.
And then finally, the build and lead, assuming that we have the facilities to accommodate a pathway like that. So that's the thinking right now. We're also looking at, I have to work with the grant administrator to, because they really wanted us to spend the bulk of the funds in the first three years of the grant.
This is just planning funds, yeah.
And, and that, you know, in a budget is a planning document. So our plans have changed because of our facilities. So I'm working with them on adjusting what we had projected to originally because of our facilities constraints.
And at the end of the planning process, we'll be working on a strategy to fund these classes as well. We have to fund them locally?
Yes, we do. We do have the LCFF Career Tech Ed set aside that also funds our, supports our ROP classes or will be over time. So it'll be a balancing act between, you know, how much ROP or how much can we fold in of the ROP into these pathways.
And some of our current ROP classes do fit these categories.
Fit perfectly, yes, perfectly.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and your commitment to kids who aren't necessarily going on to university.
We want to make sure they have, that all kids have that option.
Yeah.
I know it's a fact that the Bralta colleges are very invested in the success of this program.
They are very invested.
And they have the facilities too.
They're also the administrator of the grant.
And I know that they're very interested in working with the, with the public schools that are involved as well.
And they've been very good to work with so far.
Is there any public comment on this item?
So before I make the motion, I was just going to say, I appreciate the flexibility and the adjustment and the very intelligent approach to using some of what we have which exists there and building upon that. I really can see, I can see the programs really working because of the very thoughtful approach. So thank you for that. And I move to approve the Career Pathway Trust Grant.
Second.
All in favor of approving the Career Pathway Trust Grant, say aye.
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 So that's unanimously approved. The next item is the inter-fund balance transfer from Fund Twenty to Fund Fourteen.
Thank you. As trustees, remember for the last two board meetings, we've talked about the Fund Twenty and we're bringing it back today after Alan Gard has answered questions from the board. So I will turn this over to Mr. Gard.
Thank you. So on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, at the last board meeting, we discussed in detail the retiree benefits. And with a recent publication of the state accounting for retiree benefits, we're able to implement a new procedure in accounting that allows for retiree benefits to be more affordable, essentially. And with that implementation, it makes funding, it makes the set aside that we have in Fund Twenty essentially unnecessary. And so with that, we have a lot of pressing core basic facility maintenance requirements and maintenance needs that we talked about at the October fourteenth board meeting, such as heating for the Albany Children's Center, heating ventilation and artificial cooling for the Albany High School and Albany Middle School, as well as helping to support funding for the design of Ocean View and St. Gabriel. And so with this, I make a recommendation to approve the inter-fund balance transfer of Fund Twenty to Fund Fourteen.
Questions? Alan?
Yeah, I just have some comments and observations based on beginning the funding of our facilities needs. I would like to see some future funding planning done for the multimillion dollar facilities master plan that we have. And I suggest that sometime after we hear from the state on the funding for Marin School, that we get into a long-term funding planning process to consider how we're going to pay for St. Gabriel, for Ocean View, and some of the other sites. I think it's a little premature now, but I'm not going to be on the board then.
Good thinking.
And then we also have to, and I've said this before, but I'm just reminding you, we have to consider relocation of the students during these reconstruction projects too. And the sooner we get started on that study and planning, I think the better will be, offer will be. And the same thing with relocation of the district office. I think that needs a study for the proper location and some planning of, once we select that location. Thank you.
So if the board directs, we can, I can bring forward a study for the, just uses of our districts, of our district facilities and assessments to see, you know, where the best use of all facilities are. And for the future planning funds for all the facility projects, I think in the spring to maybe early fall would be the best time for that update because that's when we would have a lot more information about the state funding for Marin as well as the designs for Ocean View and St. Gabriel and their projected costs.
One of my concerns is that we do this study in a timely manner so that we're still able to meet the schedule that we show in the master plan for these projects. If we wait too long to go out for bonds, I think we're going to slip on our schedule for actual construction.
I have a clarifying question. I want to make sure that I understand. Is the board asking us to also look at doing a study about the additional sites that we have that are district all property? So for example, the property in Solano, as well as the property in the ACC site?
What do you mean by that?
I'm not asking for an agenda item now. I'm just.
No, no, but for, to give us direction to take a look at, you know, so for example, the valuation of the property of both the Solano site, ACC site, or maybe to do some preliminary exploration. I think we talked a little bit about this last time, exploration as to maybe what the cost would be if we were to look at the property on the Solano site in terms of looking at what would it be like if we did a potential multi-level facility there? And what would that look like in potential costs? And we talked very loosely about that.
That sounds like a part of funding planning.
We need to do it eventually anyway, so it's better sooner than later.
Right. Pat?
So I wasn't directly involved with the facilities master plan, so you can let me know. Some of you know it better than others. But I do remember that at first, there was sort of this assumption and a lot of talk on, there seemed to be a leaning that we were thinking of, you know, putting the district office at the St. Gabriel site. And then there became a larger discussion about understanding that we have a number of venues, you know, and possibilities depending on what kind of funding we do have. And I do think that larger picture, as I said, I'm not an expert on the facilities master plan, so I don't, I don't know. But I think that larger picture makes more sense. I mean, we need to figure out both what is the best use of the property that we own and also what is the most cost efficient, you know, to present it to voters, right? But clearly, we have, I mean, we have that property on Solano Avenue. And so I, I think that we need to, I would agree with what I think you're starting to get at with, which is what, that we need to look at possibilities for those, those other properties as well as, you're talking about the ACC site on Albany Hill as well?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
I, I think that, and I think I said this at the last board meeting, I really want to make sure that we are committed to putting our students first. And so when I look at the St. Gabriel site, I would like to put our emphasis into what are the needs of the students at that site? Whether this is going to be the future site of our career technical education program? What are the needs at Albany Middle School in terms of their programs? That is not to diminish the importance of needing to find a site for the district office. But I want to make sure that we, when we make these decisions around where we put programs, that it's a focus on students first. And I'm saying that with the hope that we will continue to be able to work with UC Berkeley in terms of staying where we are for a little bit longer.
Well, I mean, I think that that makes sense. But I also think the practicality is that we live in an expensive, dense urban area and we have certain set properties. And there are certain places where we could possibly build up, right?
Yes.
Which might be good for everybody. But certain places where that's not as welcome from the community or it isn't as practical. So I think looking at the big picture that way and considering, you know, growth in enrollment and, and other needs for the long term is just practical. But as I said, I'm not an expert on the facilities master plan. I wasn't involved in that. So I mean, if you have that there already, that's great.
We had a very good discussion about this at the two by two by two that Alan and I were having.
Yes.
I think, you know, the city is very interested in what our thinking is and seems really ready to cooperate. Just since the only two of us were there.
I'm going to report some more on that when we have.
I'll be quiet.
No, that's fine. It's perfect. It's relevant.
Yeah, it is totally relevant.
So I know you're trying to get clarification on what the board actually wants you to do in the spring and in the fall. But then, of course, the board is going to change over and, you know, will probably continue to clarify this. Are you getting some sense, some direction?
Yes, yes, absolutely, we are. One is to really go back and look at the facilities master plan. I know that, that there was some preliminary work done around that. Obviously, you know, things change over, you know, a year or two, at least in terms of valuation. But we, we will start the process of looking at the global picture and looking at options as to the Solano site, the ACC site, the San Gabriel site, what are the things that we're looking at, and start putting some global numbers around that, and to at least start us moving forward to start future planning. I mean, my goal is that whatever decisions we make, as a, as a team and the board makes, is that we look at what's going to happen 20 years down the road.
That's right.
So, when we're looking at Ocean View, we look at the San Gabriel site, and, and at Cornell, and even at Marin, the middle school, and in some ways, the high school, we look at it with the plans, what is this going to look like 20 years from now? Will we be able to hold the students in terms of some of the growth that is going to happen in Albany between now and 2025? So, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you that we do need to have a global picture in terms of overall the district, but also to look at some long-range planning years down the road, what we're looking at, and, and the financial piece of that, too. And also, working with the city.
Because even if you decide to go out, you know, fairly soon for something as, as a board member Maris is encouraging, you still need to have that long-term plan, so that people understand what they're investing in over time. So, I, I think we all seem to be in agreement on that, and I do understand that, that we need to wait for the spring, because we need clarification on how much access, if any, we're going to have to the funds that we've talked about for, for helping us with facilities, yeah.
Yes.
I need to bring us back to the item at hand, which is this fund transfer from Fund 20, which has essentially become disused in the way we currently fund the post-employment benefits to meet our, some urgent current facilities needs. And so, is there public comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Susan, Susan Adams, President of CSEA, and I'm going to say it again. I'm not entirely convinced that underfunding of post-employment benefits is a solved problem. If we look at other programs, such as STRS, PERS, Social Security, all of those are running into funding issues, and it's because the costs are difficult to predict, and that's true of medical costs in the future. Secondly, this money was set aside in Fund 20, and it was intended for people, not for buildings. It was unavailable for other uses for this, all this time. I think bargaining groups have an interest in it. It was mentioned in negotiations, I was present at those negotiations, as a reason for less dollars being available for raises. For these reasons, I really believe that this money should not be diverted from its original purpose without input from the bargaining groups who will, who have supported it in the past, and who will be affected by this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Gray, and I just want to echo Susan Adams' sentiments and say that ATA would also like to see this money at the table, since that's where it was first mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other comments?
Same question I asked last time. Can you guarantee that your projections to the future, that, that we'd be, we'll have stability in assuring our employees of their? Maybe you can speak a little more in detail to that.
Yeah, I can speak a little more in detail, just kind of reiterating some of the comments and points that I made at the last board meeting, where in 2004, when the board made its initial study of other post-employment benefits, taking a look at that projection, as well as the more recent projections that we do. So, those projections over the next 20 years have been, have remained steady, and that's even through the Great Recession and the Affordable Care Act implementation. The, we monitor other post-employment benefits closely. We're required to make a updated actuarial study every two years, and so, we, we do keep a close eye on it. For the, for the accounting change that we're implementing this year, we are essentially able to cut the retiree, we're, we're able to pay for 40% of our retiree benefits out of other funds, funds that are not the unrestricted general fund. And so, that relieves the unrestricted general fund for, for any purposes that the, that the board desires. And so, we're able to maximize all of the funding sources that we have, which essentially reduce the costs by, by 40% with this implementation. And so, it's a practice that many districts have been moving to, and continue to do going forward. And it just helps make the district much more fiscally solvent. And, and so, it's not a, it's not a concern that this, that diverting this, these funds would put retiree benefits at risk. It's, it's, it's 100% backed by the unrestricted general fund and the finances of the district.
Can you remind us again, which funds would guarantee this, or which funds it would come from?
So, the, the general fund is what guarantees the retiree benefits. And so, and so, there's, I don't see a risk of, of diverting the set aside funds for much-needed projects that we have.
I think Board Member Rosenbaum is, we discussed this last time, is just getting clarification, because that 3% is actually taken from other funds as well, some of our enterprise funds, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so, are you considering that? You know, I never remember the, how they're categorized. But are you considering that to be in the general fund?
No. So, the funds that are being maximized in order to help pay for retiree benefits are things like Title I, Title II, Title III, so federal funds, the child nutrition program, the preschool program, the aquatics program.
And those are enterprise programs, which are not part of the general?
Those are not part of the unrestricted general.
But we're applying that accounting change of the 3% to those funds as well?
Correct. And so, what that does is that helps release the burden on the unrestricted general fund. And so, it helps reduce the structural deficit that we have, so that less cuts would need to be made in order to balance our budget. And so, the 3% that's applied to each of those enterprise funds are not increasing the risk of those funds not being able to fully sustain themselves, because it's such a low amount, and the, those programs are able to absorb those costs.
I think you had a number for us last time. I'm trying to remember about how much per year this is saving for the general fund. Do you recall that?
Yes. So, per year, it's saving between $250,000 and $300,000 a year by maximizing the other resources that we have.
So, in four years, the amount that we're transferring, you've essentially found it somewhere else.
Correct.
And are using it for employee benefits.
That is correct.
Because it no longer needs to come from the general fund for employee benefits.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Alan, you haven't said.
So, the other observation I have is that this fund built up over four or five years at a couple hundred thousand a year, and was never, we never drew funds from Fund 20 to, to pay for employee retiree benefits that was never needed. So, since to me, you're supporting your case that the general fund has supported payment of retiree funds.
That is correct.
Pat?
So, I, I hear your concerns, and I, you know, we had a discussion about this previously. I'm not sure you guys were at the last board meeting when we had, when we had some discussions about, we, Mr. Gard clarified in more detail what the actual procedure was, and actually how, you know, how it occurred. So, what, what I, what I would say is that I plan to, and I encourage you to do so as well, to continue to be very attentive year to year, to see, you know, the explanation that's given, it's very complex. This, the, the finances and the, the 3% and, and these enterprise funds make sense. However, things change from year to year, and I think it is your right, and it is, and it is the board's responsibility to make sure to check that these enterprise funds, your colleague asked last time, what about some of these enterprise funds? Are you sure that they're going to be able to bear the burden of that in, in, in the long run? I thought that was a very legitimate question. So, I think that we, you know, we will continue to be very attentive to make sure that these, your, your concerns are certainly justified, you know, and I think that we will make sure, we're not going to just leave it here. Each year, we're going to look and see to make sure that this still seems to be the case and will work financially.
And trustee Lo, if you'd like, we could make sure that we put on the governance calendar to give you an annual update to the board around the same time next year, so that there will be an annual update. Mr. Gard said that we can do that.
It's a great incentive for us to watch very closely on our enterprise funds. You know, I get a little nervous when we talk about the pool, because we never project to make a profit from that pool. It's an incentive to maintain the pool at the same quality, which we'll talk about at the next, in the next item.
So, we'll make sure that we put on the governance calendar.
If the other board members are, are, are open to this, I, I think that that would be something that I would like to be able to give to our bargaining units, to reassure them that we are watching these finances very carefully, and that we will make adjustments if needed.
Yep.
Do the rest of you.
Yes.
Yes.
I agree with that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I think this board has shown that it's very concerned about employee benefits and retirement, so.
Yeah, we've studied this several times after it was first proposed, so.
Twenty years from now, there'll be a different board and probably a different superintendent, and so, we have to make sure that it's solid. That's the only way I could vote for this, is that, that kind of guaranteed it's solid.
So, thank you very.
And I want to say that to, to the unions as well.
Thank you very, very much for putting that on the governance calendar, so that we'll be assured to, to be updated on it. It's a very good idea.
Do I have a motion on this item?
I'll move that we approve the inter-fund balance transfer from Fund 20 to Fund 14.
I'll second.
All in favor of approving the fund transfer, say aye.
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 So, that's unanimous. And we have one more item, which is job description for Aquatic Center Director and Facilities Use Coordinator.
Thank you. And actually, I have Cynthia Te here, who is our Director of Human Resources, to answer any questions the board may have. And this is actually job description for Aquatic Center Director to take on the, the duties of Facilities Use Coordinator. And one of the benefits that we believe we're going to have is that with Amanda taking on these, these duties, that we will have much more oversight and attention to our facilities use, and we believe it actually would generate some revenue. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gard, and Cynthia's here, if you have any questions.
I think you just answered my question, which was, so this is basically increasing the responsibilities of, of our, the current position?
That is correct.
Okay.
Although, if you remember previously, there were some changes in job descriptions of, of staff positions, which gave over some, some responsibilities, I thought, of the director rightly, to, to, to other people, so that they could gain more experience and so forth. I remembered that.
Yeah.
And also, this is a, this is connection and a segue to the conversation we just had about being financially responsible and making sure we have the money to support the things that we need, because this is an enterprise fund. And so, one of the things that I was a little bit concerned about is that, you know, we, I mean, we've been really fortunate, and we cannot take for granted that the pool has been, been profitable up until now. And I want to make sure that this isn't one of those things that somebody who does really good work gets piled on with, with more, you know, success breeds, you know, you're getting more work. But, but I, I have trust that the staff has thought carefully about how to make sure, to, to make sure that everyone is effective in this role.
Yes, and you mentioned it briefly, where we took to the board a few months ago, the reorganization of the Albany Aquatic Center.
I remember.
And that helps to just build capacity of the Albany Aquatic Center, growing employees from within. And that did relieve some duties from the director as far as core day-to-day responsibilities. And so, what that allows for is to take on these additional tasks as the Facilities Use Coordinator. And so, we separated the timing to allow her to train the, the internal staff before taking on these additional duties. And what this also does is help remove the duties from the current facility supervisor. So, then, he would be able to be more attentive to just all the facilities and maintenance projects that we have going on, and, and working with our custodial and maintenance staff on, on fulfilling the needs and supporting our students.
I see, thinking into the long-term, hoping, as Board Member Maris has mentioned, that we will have many facilities responsibilities. So, I can see that that, that job would get very busy. And I assume then that you're building in time for training for the aquatic director to take on these new responsibilities and all.
Yes.
Wonderful.
What this also does is for our Maintenance and Operations Facility Supervisor, is it allows him the time to be more proactive and plan on facilities needs, rather than reacting to something when it breaks, or doesn't work, or starts to fail. He now can start projecting and start working on, how do we maintain our facilities, so that we, we, when they're in their better use, there's a constant upgrading. So, it's a real shift from fixing to proactively planning. And that will allow him the, kind of a more of a focused effort, if, if the facilities use fees, facilities use pieces off of, of, of his duties.
So, in the end, that could save us money, and, and also provide more safety for our students?
Yes.
Because we'll be ahead of the game.
Much more preventative, much more preventative maintenance can occur.
Okay, good point.
That's the word I was looking for.
That's the word I was looking for. Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Alan?
So, I looked at the old salary schedule, and this is essentially a 15% increase over the previous salary, or about $10,000 a year. And we have talked about how the responsibilities have increased. So, I, I assume you were looking at this salary increase to be corresponding to the responsibilities increase, and
Yes.
It's rather high, but I believe you are significantly increasing the responsibilities. I had one question. In your text, you talked about cost adjustments are expected based on direct costs, fair market competition. How, if the profits, so to speak, go down on the pool, are we looking for other ways to continue to afford to pay this salary?
Oh, this wouldn't be fully paid for out of the Aquatic Center enterprise budget. So, because a core of the aquatics, because a core of the position is the Aquatic Center, then a majority of the salary would be. However, a portion would then also be paid for out of just the facility use revenues that we generate. And when the position then takes on the, the duties of, you know, just reviewing the, the scope, reviewing our facility use rates, and reviewing just the, the landscape of, of what's going on, just a preliminary review. I was able, I projected out that the revenues that we can generate would more than cover the additional costs.
Would there be any way at some point for us to see, will we see an increase in use of facilities and generation of revenue in, at some point in one of the reports that you give?
Oh, sure.
Well, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm wondering if we already see it. I, I, so I'm, so I'm actually, no, I'm not asking you to do that, because I don't want to ask for more work yet. I'm just wondering if it actually exists in what, something that we already get.
For the Aquatic Center, we do provide that sort of update. I don't believe we've done that with facility use. However, what we can show quite easily is just the revenues year to year, how much has been generated.
That, that wouldn't take too much work, you?
No, not at all.
Okay.
We've seen those kind of data from, from our current director. She's coming to, you know, head.
Well, she talks about the pool, but, but now you're talking about. Well, she talks about the pool, but now you're talking about like.
Facilities use.
District-wide.
Yeah, district-wide facilities use, so.
We've seen that before also.
We could, we could agendize it for the future and put it under, like, a budget update that's on facilities use.
You know, I'm not going to, unless the other board members insist, I'm not going to ask for that just yet. It seems like we've asked for plenty of things. So I'll just hold up on that one for now, and we'll revisit that.
Sounds good. Ron?
And when we, when we talk about, you know, the salary, I just want to reiterate that and remind everyone in public that this is a school facility, and a good portion of the use of that facility is for our students.
That is correct.
And so, just as we pay for teachers out of our general fund, we pay at least part of the person who's not only provides service to our students, but to the, to the public and actually is generating a profit. It's well worth it, and it's paying for somebody who serves our students.
It's also an incredible community asset, and I think the community is really supporting it as well. A lot of their income, I think, does come from the public. And as a swimmer, I've compared our prices to adjacent areas. I'm not sure we have a lot of room to increase the price. I was surprised we were able to afford, or that we were able to charge the prices we currently do, but it's such a good facility. I think the quality of the facility has drawn a lot of people who are willing to pay extra. But I don't think we have, we have to be very careful about increasing rates.
Right.
We have two members of our facilities, what did we call it, the Pool Committee?
We have somebody here from the public who could provide significant testimony.
There's a long history with the, with the pool, and now.
Is there any public, public comment on the item?
There we go.
How about that?
Welcome, Mark.
I mean, I still remember us saying, us saying, oh, we're just going to, you know, this is, this is something the community wants, this is something we're going to give to the community, we're just not going to have to worry, and then.
Two pools, one pool.
Now we're actually making a profit.
Told you. Peggy McQuaid, Albany resident, and I'm kind of coming at, this is weird, at this from 10 years ago. But it's funny being in this room and being last on the agenda. It's like, yeah, okay, we can do this. I'm a little bit concerned about the qualifications, and I know you're not at this point. At least, I don't think you're looking to hire somebody new, but I think you need to look at those qualifications. It talks about having CPR first aid AED in six months. I think you need to have it right now. So I think you should, you should modify that to, they need to have that. There's a, there's a difference between being an instructor, and you talk about water safety lifeguarding instructor, which is different than being a provider. So I think you need to get the language cleaned up just a little bit on that. And as far as compensation, just be sensitive to the whole compensation picture here. It's an increase in responsibility, so it needs that little piece in it's. But think of the whole compensation, not just the actual salary. And I just added in here that I wanted to express my appreciation to the current person who does the facilities scheduling, because I schedule for another organization, and he's always been really helpful as I'm switching around and changing and everything. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, and thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Is there?
That was a really good question.
Yeah, no, really relevant. Is there a particular reason for the, for example, the 60-day, 60 days on the CPR for positions such as this, or is that?
No, to be completely honest, we just added the facility use pieces to the current pool manager job description. But we can make these amendments because that is completely relevant as far as having a person who actually has these certifications on day one.
That was a good catch.
So what I would recommend then is, because the piece that was actually added to the existing job description was the Facilities Use piece, what I would do is, if the board would like to, you know, vote on this item with the amendment that Ms. Teah goes back and adjusts the section on the requirements for CPR and the.
We could do that right now, I think.
The water, the water safety lifeguard, and to have the, have it, have a current certification. And she can do that.
I would actually move this item with the changes of, number three on the qualifications requirements, must be a certified pool operator or aquatics facility operator.
And then just period there, right?
Period.
And the same thing with CPR.
And same thing with the CPR, just drop the time and the, must have current water safety lifeguard instructor certifications.
Unless there's some reason not to, but I haven't heard one yet.
Is that what you said, Peggy? Yeah. Why give Ms. Teah any more work?
Well, first of all, I think you should talk to Amanda, because, like I said before, I'm looking at this from 10 years ago, and I know things change. But I, I think you want to have in there current lifeguard certification, lifeguard certificate. And current, I'm a little hesitant to say water safety instructor because that's a totally a Red Cross term, and you may not want to tie yourself totally to the Red Cross. You may want to use another comparable provider. And you don't want to get into all of the ramifications of that. So I would, I would suggest that you get some of this language from Amanda, who's, who knows what the current wordage should be.
So maybe I can, if you'll indulge me, I can help with the recommendation, if you recommend the passage of this, with the understanding and agreement that Ms. Teah will revise and update the certification requirements to current standards.
Yes, I can certainly do that.
Okay. So I would move that we approve the job description, aquatics director, facilities use coordinator with that modification.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of approving this with the updates to current standards as proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous approval on that item. It's the last item, and so I think we just have to sit here for 45 minutes because we finished early, so.
No, we.
We still have board superintendent comments.
We are owed that.
We have board super and superintendent comments, so.
And I don't think I'm going to fill up 45 minutes, but I just have two items. The first is, last night I had the opportunity to go with Ellen Gard to the UC Village Resident Association monthly meeting.
Oh, excellent.
And we had, coming in and out, about 15 to 20 parents who came in, and it was a great discussion. It's, again, our ongoing efforts to really solidify and grow the partnership they have, we have with our UC Village. We also had Karen Gee, the president of the PTA for Oceanview, was there. And I think what the parents really appreciated was that we were there. But two, they actually would like to have us come back. They had some questions around the Common Core state standards and the smarter balanced assessment. So we're going to be inviting Mr. Parenti to come back with us along with Dr. Brown, because there were some questions around enrollment. And we're also going to be asking Susan Stevenson to come, because there's a lot of questions around before and after-school programs. And there were some specific questions that I did not have enough of the expertise to answer. So I do believe that throughout the year, we will be invited back to provide information. And the goal of this is to really allow a good partnership so that our families in UC Village have a much easier time enrolling students and that their children are very, very successful. The other thing I want to report on is tomorrow's my third campus day visit, so I will be spending all day at Albany Middle School from about eight in the morning until about three o'clock, with a short break to come and do board prep. So I'm looking forward to going out to the middle school campus and spending some time. What I like about this is I get to sit in classrooms for at least an hour per class. And so I get to learn an awful lot about teaching and learning and seeing the continuity. So I will be doing that this Friday, and then next Friday I'll be at the high school.
You know, if you like, I bet we could meet you at the middle school. Would you rather do that than have to come back to the office? Or did you want to come back anyway?
Everything is laid out on my table for board prep, so I don't want to.
Then don't mess with it, we'll meet you down there.
But I do encourage, what's really nice is trustees are emailing me saying that you would like to join me on those visits. And Member Black has visited with me, Vice President Maris, you've been with me for a certain amount of time. So if anybody would like to spend some time with me tomorrow at the middle school, we can come for an hour or more than an hour. We can come to Ms. Gray's classroom and just sit and learn.
The middle school is the site that I've adopted, and I very much would like to come for part of the day. What would be a good time?
I'm, I'm going to be there eight o'clock in the morning. And I will stay till, I think I'm going to stay for lunch because I do enjoy having lunch with the students. I will be staying there probably about 12, 15, 12, and come back to work on board prep. And then we'll go back at, at two o'clock to, because I have another small meeting, go back from two to three o'clock and end the day. I do like to see the students coming, and I also like to see students in passing period, but to really look at students as they exit too. I'm still very interested in looking at traffic patterns in the neighborhood around Albany Middle School and to look at student safety.
I would just say, I mean, I think it's wonderful that you're doing this. I think it's great. As a former teacher, even though I would be interested in going, I don't, I wouldn't want two strange adults marching into, depending on the age, the classroom, to disrupt it in that way. So I mean, I think it's wonderful that you're going, and I would like, I was tempted to say yes, but I, I think there are other ways in which I can, I can visit and observe and be less disruptive. But I look forward to hearing about what, what you learned and having you share it with us.
Thank you.
You know, and I take that to heart. I'm very interested in passing periods and lunchtime and before and after school. So I might come around lunchtime and maybe after school as well, so.
I'll be the one wearing the new Albany hoodie that I have.
I don't have one.
Has a nice big cobra on it.
Oh, cool.
So will the, will the attendants or the office know where you are? Who will know if I come?
Where to find me?
Where to find you?
I would say, I will, I will try and leave at the office where I'm going to be. If not, you can text me, and I'll respond and tell you what room I'm in. Actually, if, Ms. Gray's right there. If you don't mind, I can start. If you're going to come in the morning, I can start my day in Kung Gray's classroom. I'm putting you on the spot, but.
Room 212.
Room 212, well, I'll start off the day in room 212.
So I'm going to be writer's code again this year for the eighth grade classes? When are you going to be in the eighth grade class?
I don't know, I float.
Maybe we can talk later.
Okay.
It's not till February. What time is lunch again?
Lunch, I think, is at 12:15 to 12:45, 12:55. So I will be there for, I will be there for part of lunch, because I do come back for board prep.
Ron, I'm just hoping the eighth graders will still be there in February.
I encourage wherever you go that you stay for a good period of time, say for about an hour, because you really get to see teaching from bell to bell, and you see this continuity that's really wonderful.
That's about how long I stayed, two periods, and I was able to.
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time in every site in the past, so that would be great. Whoops, that's not where I want.
Other, so board comments?
I'm sorry, was that?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Alan, go ahead.
So I attended the Marin School Facilities, kind of a wrap-up meeting, so that the WLC Architects Group would be able to prepare and submit their design documents from Marin School to the state school, the state school district for application for seismic and hardship funding. I think it's pretty well wrapped up, and so I think WLC should be able to make their submission on time.
Okay.
Those are the design documents. We also had a two-by-two-by-two meeting last Monday. Ron has already referred to that. But normally, a two-by-two-by-two does include University Village, and I suggest we, if they're interested, that we bring them in.
Not University Village, per se. The university.
Well, the university, but it's usually university people. I've been on those two-by-two before.
We've actually added members from the UC Village to come. And so usually we invite Dawn, but I found out last night it's actually another person that we should be inviting. So it's kind of like a two-by-two-by, two-by-two.
But there's definitely an opportunity for them to ask their questions about core curriculum, and we can be prepared to answer those questions. So in the meeting, we discussed our school district, future facilities master plans, if the city's aware of what can happen within the district concerning traffic and safety issues when we're building and also doing the construction projects. We also talked about the transfer of the adult school from the university, from the school district to the, to the city and how that's functioning. We didn't get a real complete response on that. And then our mutual use of recreation facilities. We have recreation facilities and a swimming pool, and also potential use of our gyms for some evening programs. So we discussed mutual use of recreation facilities. We discussed the city general plan and their housing element and how it might impact our schools and our school population. So those are valuable issues, I think, that as a community we should be discussing between the city and the school district, and we should continue to do that. We kind of fell back for a while, and I think it's important to continue those. I was really pleased with the election results, not just the parcel tax, but the way the school board candidates handled themselves. That was a very low-key, inexpensive, I think, appropriate expenses. I didn't see a lot of brochures on people's porches. I think their main expense was just the, just the county brochure that, where they make their campaign statements.
Well, the filing fee is.
It's filing fee, right, but it does include that statement that most people get an opportunity to read before they make a decision on the candidates. It was very civilized. There were some other campaigns in the Bay Area that were not nearly so civilized. And also to announce that the city is having their Sustainability Committee meeting on the 20th of November, I believe that's Friday, from seven to nine at City Council. Participate in that committee, I think we call it a green committee, but it's an opportunity to see what the city is doing and what we might be able to expect to do, particularly with our facilities master plan. Thank you.
So I wasn't planning to say anything, but I'll build on some of what Board Member Maris said. So one thing, there were two things. One thing is that he mentioned the, the city talking to us about uses of our facilities. So I believe that we had a joint.
Yeah, we do.
A joint, what's it called, a joint use?
Agreement.
Agreement, and so I don't know if that is, was discussed and confirmed, that we still have that joint use agreement on our, about facilities?
We didn't discuss that in particular, but I know about it, and I'm pretty sure the city does as well.
So I just want to.
There is a document.
Right, so I just want to make sure that you are aware that, that we assume that there's a joint use agreement between the city and the school district. Okay, for your information.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then the second thing is, in reference to sustainability, I was going to hold off on this until later when we have the new board members sworn in, but there has been some discussion back and forth about the, how the appointments are going to be made. And so I don't think this needs to be discussed now, but I think we need to have a clear protocol on the board about how we're going to do the appointments, because there's been a bit of confusion back and forth. But related to what Board Member Maris said, we have open positions for the Sustainability Committee. So that's something that we'll revisit fairly shortly, probably after the new board members are, are on the board.
And we also have the open positions, as you've mentioned in the past, on the Arts Committee and.
Yes, I won't go, I won't go into detail about some of the back and forth that has gone forth about that. But I don't think that it was efficient or particularly effective for the people that I'm trying to recruit. So I will, I'll wait for the new board to come on, and I'll say that we need to have a clear protocol about how we're going to do this for everyone involved.
One other thing that got discussed at the meeting, I don't think you mentioned it, is that we had a brief discussion on the term limits for the. it, is we had a brief discussion on the term limits for the, for the school board-
Yes.
And what, you know, the city's response, and at that point, they were talking about going directly to the council, but we've had an update on that, which was, remind me, Alan.
It's still before the charter review committee.
Still before, and they want to finish that process.
Right.
And they clarified that it has to be, any amendment to the city charter would have to be by the vote of the citizens.
Of the community.
Yes.
All right, anything else? I have nothing else. The meeting is closed.
Great.